I want to call to order the Lynchville City Council for a regular meeting September 6, 2022. I'm going to start off first, meeting in remembrance of Jerry Slosser, who was a city council member. He was a fire chief. He served a number of times on the city council. Jerry was a teacher. My brother said that he was one of the best teachers that he had, Dwight did, and he was an excellent teacher. Jerry been in Grayson Manor for a number of, I'll start saying a number of years. He'd been down there for a long time and he has really struggled. I went down and visited him and he, one good thing is he called me about 11 o'clock at night and I could talk about a half an hour. So I'm glad they got his phone or whatever. But we want to remember Jerry and also Marvin Dixon was killed delivering a home, pulling it on a tractor. Was it Rabbit Flat Road?
Canny Creek.
Canny Creek Church Road. Marvin worked at the water plant and Marvin had an auction house. Those of you might remember that Marvin ended up marrying Jerry Miller's wife. She was a, Jerry ran the ambulance service many years ago and-
Donna Joyce.
Yeah, Donna Joyce. And let's just take just a minute or two and bow our heads in remembering, remembering those people. And then we'll, about a half a minute or so, I'll ask you to stand up. I think that's enough. Let's all stand for a pledge allegiance to the flag. Margie Decker is going to lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh oh. Now there it is. No, we're gonna wait, Lori. Called me. He's wanting to have a cook out. We're gonna try to reconsider at some point, maybe trying to name something after Jerry. Thank you, Lori. Okay, we got a, we don't have a really long agenda. We've got a lot of visitors and we're going to give everybody an opportunity to talk, what's due. But we're going to start with the pledge allegiance. We've done that. Those of us that's on our email list has got a copy, the minutes of the regular meeting on August 15th. If you see any additions, corrections that you'd like to make to it, speak now. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll second.
Jessica, second. All in favor? Okay, next, we got approval, ratification of the bills. Billy Dallas, what do you say?
Hey, was this Scotty's contract in the stone for $86,000? Is that blacktop? Is that all of it?
That's the last section of streets they done. I can't remember which one it is.
So how far along are you?
Getting real close. We gotta try to figure it out now, just exactly what I've got left. And I still got a few little projects we gotta do, but we're getting close.
Thank you.
Billy, do you have any other issues with any other bill?
No, sir.
Would you make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll accept.
Accept the bill.
All in favor?
Aye.
We pay the bills. So we're now at the visitors. We got a room full of people. It's good to see everybody out. It's good to have you. We love people that's interested in what we're doing down here. And we met earlier today with Ms. Rose Booth and Teresa. We met about an hour, I guess, to meet Rose. And we talked about a number of different things and I think we all left pretty satisfied. And Rose wants to address the crowd. I'm gonna ask you to come on up here, Rose, and talk right in that microphone.
I don't like not looking at people. Can I turn this thing?
Well, now, we're sitting right here.
I know, but I don't want to look at you. I'm only looking at you.
Well, that's all right. You look wherever you want.
Sorry, I looked at you today. I don't need to look at you no more.
The camera.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
See, you're on, well, that's all right. Just stand sideways.
My name is-
There you go.
Okay. My name is Rose Booth and I'm with the local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Grayson Springs chapter. It came to our attention that back in 2016, we dedicated a monument for the Vietnam vets that was away from the main monument. And the city so graciously at that time put a walkway to it. It was a, it is a plaque and a bench. And so it was brought to our attention that the concrete was missing out of the middle of it because there was going to be a walking track, which I think is a great idea, the walking track. However, didn't understand why they didn't just leave the concrete. So today, Teresa and I met with Billy and with Rick and with Wes and Teresa and we, and we asked about it. And so Wes very graciously explained the whole situation and he had said that it was taken out because they had to like put the, put two and a half feet in it to build it up basically and that they had to take the concrete out. So I asked him, of course, when is the concrete coming back? And so he assured me that it would probably be back by November. They were going to try very hard for that. That filled my portion of what I was there for because I was just there for my concrete. And so with that, I wanted the Vietnam vets that are here to know that it's not accessible now, but Wes says that anybody who has come by, he has explained that too. It will be back. You'll be able to go up there and sit and relax just like you were before. So if anybody has any questions about it, I'll take them. They'll take them too. But that was my portion of what was today. Teresa so kindly came with me and they have other concerns which she expressed. And that's it for me.
Rose, thank you. You might-
Thank you guys for working on that.
Let's, let's go ahead and talk about the flagpole while we're here.
Okay.
Chart, the flagpole has been in a state of repair since I've been here. We've worked on it continually. It was dropped during, while it was put up. We have spent a ton of money on it. And Charlie Corbett, if you go to Rough River, you can see that big flag on the hillside over there. Charlie Corbett graciously agreed to volunteer his time to come up here and work on that. And I basically gave Charlie a clean check. I give him a purchase order. I said, "You buy what's necessary to fix this thing." So one electric let us use a crane on it previously, but they would not let Charlie get up in the bucket. And so we hired a crane out of Louisville. It was about $1,400. We put Charlie on top of that flagpole. He done away with that lighting system up there. He said, "The best lighting system is from the ground because you can service it and care for it." And then the pull, he done change a different size cables that's in there. And then he put a, the bell on top. It's all different. It's all brand new. We have spent a total about, Lori, did we get a total?
I think it's right around $3,000.
About $3,000. Mr. Corbett would not take a cent for his work and I appreciated him doing that. I think it's actually fixed. And we had considered doing an outside, taking the cable, all the inside cables that we've done, including these, have been a headache. So we considered doing a pull-up, but the flag guy in Louisville said you wouldn't have enough people that could grab that rope and pull up that size flag. And Teresa, Tammy's done ordered a new flag. Charlie Corbett said he changes his twice a year and that's what we'll do with ours as well. And there's still a little bit of life left in this one. Then our pavers, some of the pavers where the water, if y'all have been over there, some of the pavers where the water's washed out, it washed out this base that supports those pavers. So we have contracted somebody for $600, one to Tammy.
$750.
$750?
$650.
$650 to fix those. And, and I think after our meeting today, I, we were all pretty pleased. Teresa, would you say that?
I just would like a time frame of when the lights are going to be on over there. That's, that is my main concern is that it is disrespectful to have that in the dark over there. And that's all I'm asking.
Okay.
And that's all I've asked for over a year now.
Mickey?
I just wanted to say-
Come up here and talk. Anybody that wants to, I want to give you an opportunity to talk.
I just wanted to say a little bit. I guess if I know, my name's Mickey Kipper on the Commander of the American Legion, Post 71. And what I want to do is thank Charlie for the flagpole. Thank the city and everybody that had anything to do with it. And this pole got, started rolling. Teresa Gisick started rolling. I know, everybody knows it. She started it rolling and we got it going. And the thing about it is that that flagpole, you know, I have to say, it has been nothing but trouble.
Has been. It got dropped. Did you know that?
Yeah. And as long as we get her going now, that's what all of the Sarah Aga had.
The company we bought that from-
When we started that, Billy was on the council, Tootie was on the council, Margie's on the council, and then Harold Miller was on the council, Kelly Stevenson, and I don't know.
Margaret.
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 Margaret, yeah, Margaret.
You know, the company we bought that from filed bankruptcy.
Yeah, I knew.
Not soon after that.
They dropped the poles, what's concerned.
That's right.
They dropped the poles, stretched the cable out. And then we put a new cable on it. That, see, that, that new cable's too big.
That's right. That's right.
The new cable's too big. And that caused it to not be able to crank up because it's getting too tight before it could crank up.
That's right.
Cranking up too much stuff.
I think we got it fixed, don't you?
I think it got it fixed. And it's like you said, I want to, you know, thank everybody for this. And if we can help y'all in any way, let us know, you know. Let us know. And I know there was a fund that we had on these pavers whenever I came to the meeting. Billy was there and I came to the meeting, me and Shane. And Steve Burden's got, he came to us, Steve Burden came to us and asked us, you know, would we like to get a park over there, you know, Veterans Park? We said yes. So then we came to the city and we talked to the city. And with the city's help, a lot of donors from the community and the pavers and stuff, most of them were paid for, you know, for that. And then the $250 that you give for all of these pavers, they're supposed to, that's supposed to be money that takes care of that park. That's what that's, and that fund is to take care of that park. You know, that money's supposed to be for it. I don't know. I guess you got the fund.
Mickey, I checked today. We got $20,263. But now what we have just spent over there will be paid for out of that. So-
You mean $3,000?
Yes.
Okay. I have no problem with anything like that.
And that's it.
What was the last deposit of that, in that account?
What was the last deposit into?
In that, in that account?
I think $250 was the last. It was either 250 or 500, I'm thinking. It was 250. I just looked at it today and there was two deposits and they were either reversed. But that's for a paper that someone purchased.
I know. Was that a year ago, last week?
No, that's been a little while ago. I don't know exactly the date. I didn't look at the date.
Well, I just wanted to make sure the money.
I think there's, within the last year, there's been a deposit.
Because I want that park taken care of, being a Vietnam vet. And I'm sure all those veterans, Vietnam veterans, everything wants to take care of it.
My dad's names over there.
And I have something on that sidewalk too. I don't understand why you took it out. I still don't understand why you took it out.
What's that?
Sidewalk.
Look, Wes.
That part of the walking track is going to be handicap accessible, so it can't be more than five foot three. Sidewalk was two and a half foot higher than what it could be for us to put the sidewalk or the blacktop in for the ADA compliance.
The maximum on a handicap plane, say, is eight? I mean, that's eight, is eight?
Yeah.
Great, eight?
Yeah.
And that's, that's like, that doesn't look like it's that high.
It don't look like it, but we shot this meeting.
Did you, and how you want to do that then?
Well, you see where we filled the hole up? And when you go around the curve right there, going to it, the track will start right there and go across where we filled that great big hole up and come right in behind the walking tracks. They're all going to blend in the same way.
When did your building walk?
The sidewalk?
Yeah.
Ah, so how long ago that's been?
It's got a plaque on it.
Well, so it's been bad shape ever since then?
No, no, no. It had to come out because we're putting this walking track in. It's two and a half foot higher than what we could, I couldn't blend that.
What the grade's gonna be.
Because if we put my elevation for us, ADA, it would be more than what it could be. Does anyone say?
No, I don't. If you got the sidewalk there and bring the blacktop into it and buttered it up to it, that sidewalk's still going to be the same grade.
Right. What we're going to do is put the walking track through.
The walking track's going to be the grade.
I don't know what you're talking about, but if the sidewalk's there and it's at the correct grade it was, I could put it in and you bring a blacktop into the sidewalk, what you do out here is with your blacktop.
Right. But the sidewalk was not at the correct grade. It had to be dropped two and a half feet in order for us to get our ADA complants through there.
Yeah. I, I still don't understand that.
But, yeah, if you shoot that on elevation with the level, there's a dip that comes down through there and the blacktop. So we're having to keep that track above the blacktop all the way through.
I have no problems with that at all.
And that's the only thing.
If you were to wait it and to cut it out right before you put the dent, in case anyone's getting up there. Because you can get up there. To me, that looks for a steep grade. Of course, I'm walking. If I had a walker, I could get up there. If I was in a wheelchair, I could get up there.
Up the sidewalk was fine.
Up the sidewalk.
Yeah, but our blacktop coming across, you see where, you know where the walking track's going to be?
Yeah, but you can't, you couldn't have come down and buttered that end of that.
No, it was two and a half foot too high for us.
The sidewalk was.
Sidewalk was, so we had to drop it. It don't look, I mean, it looks like it'd be opposite.
I still don't understand what you're talking about. I mean, you got the sidewalk there and it's a white grade. That sidewalk ain't going to change. And you bring the blacktop to it and-
Yeah, but you're not following.
No, I'm not.
Why don't you agree to meet, Wes, over there?
I'll get over there and make sure that happens.
Yeah, yeah.
But that sidewalk don't change.
Does anybody want to address the council? You're welcome to. Come, come right up. Come right up here.
I have a question concerning the-
Yes.
sidewalk we were talking about and the, and the walking track. Now Wesley, when you, when you had to cut that out, right, the high side of that sidewalk goes up through there. Now, is that still going to be handicap accessible? You're going to have to cut the rest of it out in order to redo the-
Depending on where the track goes, if the track causes it to be more, then we will replace it back.
Right, right. That would be a concern that I would have.
It will be put back. Everything that we do has to be handicap accessible.
Right. But that would be a concern. And I understand where you was missing was in there, but where he's talking, they had to cut it down. The sidewalk was up here. So Wesley, what they had to do, they had to do everything down.
Oh, so if the sidewalk is up here and they have to come down here, they can't build up to the estimate? It's not going to change.
No, they have to bring the sidewalk up here because it goes down with the grade. I understand what you're saying, but I understand we're here.
It's on a different page, same book, different page. So I'll, tomorrow I'll show how.
Wes, Wes is welcome to meet anybody over there. We can set a time. If anybody wants to meet with Wes, we'll meet over there. Okay, honey, come up here. Tell me who you are now.
My name is Phyllis Vincent. I don't live in the city. However, I just retired from 37 years of federal service with the US Army. So I consider myself a patriot. I have questions about this walking track. I think it's great. Personal exercise, great thing. Is it commercially done or are you doing it in-house?
We're doing a part of it. It was so expensive, it out, it exceeded our budget. We got a $141,000 grant to do that, but there's a lot of things that we could be done in-house.
That we do in-house.
So that's what we're doing.
So I guess my question I'm going to get to is, with this walking track, which has an estimated completion date of November this year?
No.
No.
Not the whole track. I think just the replacement.
That's a phase of it. This is phase one. It's actually seven phases of it.
But the part that specifically affects the sidewalk, November?
Yeah, it's five.
Actually, we're a year behind because last year we got our grant, but we couldn't start it. We're at least a year behind on it.
Tracking.
Yeah.
My next question is, was there not any way to either notify the public, and maybe I missed it, that there was going to be an interruption with handicap accessible usage to that particular monument?
Just to the bench. You're understanding. We're just talking about the bench.
I'm telling you about the concrete that was removed.
There's nothing that's changed. There's nothing that's changed except going up to this bench.
I understand that. That's not my question.
Okay.
Good to hear. Yes.
My question is, were people notified so that they could maybe visit it before you removed the sidewalk?
Visit the bench?
Correct. And that was more of a touch.
No.
Easy trigger.
Yes, we could, we could have probably notified the public more in depth than what we did. Yes, ma'am.
I guess my, my parting thought is, maybe if we thought about it a little bit better, executed in a more timely, bad manner, then we might have avoided this.
I'd say we're running about a year behind. We were thankful that we were able to start it. It's going to mean a whole lot.
I think it would be a great addition.
And as I said, it's been a subject of conversation for probably two years. Thank you, honey. Thank you.
That's a really good idea. If anything, something that like this, this just, to put it out there and let the public know because that is like, my family are out like, whoa, and I'm nothing older than them. No concrete, you know, and I'm thinking, what happened here? I didn't know. But that might be a good intention.
Well, I didn't envision it, envision it getting close to the veterans center myself. And I was surprised that it was. And said, Wes is on top of it. And anybody else want to talk? Carol Miller, did you want to talk to us? Anybody else? Billy? Robert Stiles?
No.
Oh, here you go. Come on up.
I'm Gerald Blaylock, a veteran, also a commercial contractor for 35 years. I was wanting to know, which most people are, I mean, I already asked that question. Normally when you do a project like this, there's at least a six-month required notice to be posted before any construction is to be done. Was that notice, was that notice given? Was there a sign erected notifying what the plan of the property was to do the, do the expansions?
We've been talking about a walking track for over a year.
Talking is one thing. Posting and notifying is something totally-
Do we need to post every, everything that we do in our parks?
Yep. And also, also you need to have, the plans also available for the general public to-
They are, they are publicly available. Gerald.
When we're doing something within ourselves for the city?
Well, it doesn't matter whether you do it within yourselves and within the city. That's a, that's a general, that's a general code. It's got to be required and met.
Are you talking about a code that's a state code or like, there's so many different types of codes?
It's required through any building contract. I do, I'm a GC through, I go from state to city. So I, it's a state I do, I have to go and post everything before I'll be built.
But it's different for you because you're a private individual versus a city.
We're a commercial option. So I mean, anything you need, even what you do as a city, you still have to get permits to do what you do, do the city.
But those codes are going to change state by state.
Actually, well, this Grayson County doesn't require building permits. That's correct for if you're doing electrical wiring or-
Right. Plumbing.
Plumbing or HVAC or anything, you have that permit. So if you have lighting or anything that you're doing, then you have to have permits. And it's got to be posted.
But those-
Prior to, prior to building.
But those codes are going to vary by state. They're going to vary depending on where that work's taking place.
But like he just said, what I just said also, there's no building permits required. But there is electrical plumbing and HVAC. That has to be posted. Correct?
That's the only three. But it is if it's a project for us. If we're doing like the ballpark project or something like that.
But if you have prints and everything, you're putting it through the system. They just said those prints are accessible.
We're not required to have prints. Like if we add lighting to the memorial, we won't have to have anything for that. We can just add to what we've got.
We'll see.
Anybody else?
I mean-
I want to say, Inspector.
We'll see.
Anybody else?
What are they here for? To cause trouble?
Billy? MRT, did you want to say any parting words on the behalf of veterans?
Just run my baby out.
My, my dad was a veteran. His name's over there. And Joyce's brother, Milver, is over there. And we want that place to look nice as much as we do the veterans.
And I, I just want to take a minute to thank all of you for your service. And I think it's awesome how much pride that you all have in the Veterans Memorial Park. And I wish more people in our community cared as much about our community as you all do that Veterans Memorial. So I appreciate you all.
Do you have a time frame and a line that you can tell us?
Do we, Wes?
No, not right now. I'd say one thing, it'd take, like we talked today, you know, if we hired an electrician to come in and do, that's all they done. They have to be done quick. I have electricians on staff, but they also do other things for the city. So, you know, if it starts flooding, they come up there. It's just, we have to work it in when we can. So I'm hoping to get them started in the next week or so. Right now, we're running garbage because we're at a holiday, so we're behind on trade. So that becomes a priority, you know, to get that up. And then I can put one of them over there working.
Is there no light at all over there right now?
No light on the flags. And it is disrespectful for the flags to be pointed high if we have no light on.
So Teresa, just tell me if you think this would be a solution. If it ends up taking a while, Wes, like you figure out it's going to be a project that would last, be pushed out a little bit, could we get some of those solar lights that point up just for the meantime while we're waiting on the other project?
Some of the flags were properly illuminated at times? They did.
Yeah.
Wesley, Kim?
So it wouldn't go up quite high enough? I was just trying to think of a short-term solution.
I probably would put up another light there.
No, we had them on this welcome Lynchville sign and you just seen Hold a Match down there.
I want to say something else that this morning.
Okay, Mickey.
Y'all, you know, it's been that way for years. So if it gets done in the next five or six months, it gets done in the next-
We want it done.
I'm just saying it takes that long. It's long since it gets done because everything's been processed. You know, I thank y'all for all you can do and everything for this. Had it been for Steve, Eric Legion, and you all and a lot of the donors, City of Lynchville, and a lot of other donors, that thing would have been there.
No.
Absolutely.
It's nice to take that around.
I said, we're just learning about the crank up things.
I must call them all embarrassed because a lot of them do. And I, you know, I appreciate them.
I thank everyone for coming and your interest in the group. Robert?
I wanted to say, what for the veteran, when, when the flag is, they're Japanese.
That's right. Thank you, Robert. I thank everyone for coming out. We're going to move on with the- Does somebody want to talk? Jeff, do you want to talk?
Yeah, one last question. First off, thank you guys for hearing us and thank you for reciprocating conversation. This is the way that we move ahead. Now, speaking of the memorial park, speaking of the school over by farmers, there are several different flags around the community that are not illuminated. I believe Ms. Elsa has tried to address that. And, and I get, we're, we're, we've been dealing with COVID. We've been dealing with everything. People have come, people have gone, we've lost people. And I support what you had said about as long as we are actively working to complete it. And I'm fine with that. What I think would be something good for you guys to talk about on your own is, the, the BRG has no vested property. You know, we come here as veterans, not as property owners or anything like that. But I do know the American Legion has certain properties around that they've helped build up, helped create. In the future, would it be possible to get a veteran representative? Because the BRG is 19 solid members strong right now. We have a huge labor force. Not that we want to go out and do all the work, but we can get some stuff done where, as you had said, if you had an electrician, that's all that he did. He could get it done quick. But you're thinning out your electricians across the city. I really think in the future, if we could get a veteran representative, we might bring a lot to the table that you guys don't have access to. Or with respect, are just too busy to get to until it comes up and it's placed on the list.
Jeff, you understand, I forgot who called the other day, wanting to volunteer in one of our parks over there. And we run into a liability issue. Somebody gets hurt over there. And a commercial electrician could work on that. If he takes an injury, he's, he's covered himself.
Oh, I'm not talking, you know, that, that was just a rough example.
Yeah.
But we have a wealth of phone numbers that we can start picking up our phones and calling and getting people in touch with each other. I mean, we dragged a Bobcat 388 miles out Eastern Kentucky and worked for two and a half days over one night and was able to clean out a schoolhouse with three people.
Who, who is the head of your group? I mean, I'm sorry for my ignorance on what it's called. I mean, is, is that something that, that you can bring from your group?
Yes.
And to the mayor?
Yes, it sure is.
I mean, even if you come in here through the day from nine to 12 or nine to two, whatever he's here. I mean, would that satisfy what you're wanting?
Be willing to help. I just, and, and I'm sorry, I'm backtracking a little bit, but I drove a roadie today and watched another veteran play rec. He's a Grayson County guy, but he was originally from that area. So, and it was a veteran to be a help before we first started. So, yeah, I'm a little touchy on it today because having to go through that, I didn't have to go through it. I done it because I know that's what I wanted to do. I'm a little touchy with activities right now, especially after you go through one and you receive the flag and the hats and everything. It's just, if you never seen it, you double touch it harder than you have. So I'm kind of, but yeah, that just adds to-
I mean, that, that would, that would work with you, wouldn't it, Matt?
Any, listen, I do a lot of work for the city that I don't get paid for and there's, there's a lot of stuff to do. And we're trying to-
Yeah, we're not here to be- Yeah, we're not here to be against you in any way.
For good community.
I don't see it being an issue. I think the biggest thing is we have to coordinate. Outside of that, you know, outside of just coordinating, when we have time to somebody to be able to match our times together.
Yeah. Well, I said, I appreciate you coming tonight. And is anything else, Jeff? Anybody else want to speak?
Communication, you know, just communication.
That's exactly...
Communicate with Jude, communicate with Taffy, or, you know, communicate with everybody, communicate.
Mickey worked on the flag down at the other city hall. To ours, I was on drunk. We welcome community involvement.
I think communication is most important, but it's like...
And that's what we have. Please come and ask us straight up versus asking any neighbor. I mean, if you want something done, or you want to make sure it gets to the people it needs to be done, come see us.
And same way, if y'all got something left, you have to stick up.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
And if we want us to come and see you, we'll come and see you.
For an accounting of the account that all of these papers and things...
It's public. It's public, correct?
And the last time that it was audited outside of the city, you would have that information available.
Yeah.
Well, I've talked to Bill Thompson this week, so I know he still does a lot with the pavers. Or he tells me he does.
That should be a yes or no question?
You know, I'm sorry?
I assumed that would be a yes or no question.
The pavers, speaking of pavers, probably will need some of those pavers.
They're in the hospital building, Mickey. We got all kinds of them.
Yeah, we have.
I have one pallet left.
How many is it?
A pallet. It's... Yeah.
First, we'll need to hear when we start.
Well, I know where fifty's at, so...
Yeah.
I'll get you back to you.
Yeah. Well, I think that's where ours came from. I want to move on to you.
Yeah.
Anybody else want to speak? We want to move on to our agenda. Anybody else?
Mayor, I just wanted to let you know, I think it's Mr. Blaylock. And then in the yellow shirt, I don't think I caught your last name.
Philson.
Philson, okay. I also keep office hours. The attorney position's a part-time position, but I keep office hours down here on Thursdays. So, if there's ever any issues with, you know, license issues, notice issues, I do keep office hours. I'm available for meetings. I'm here usually, you know, seven to twelve on Thursdays. Pardon? Yes, I do. I have cards. Yeah.
Phyllis, to answer your question you were asking about records, anytime you all want copies of records, we have open records requests. You can either get the form on the city website, and just fill that out. And what we have available, we'll turn over.
Yeah. And like Mickey said, communication's always big, and it's always nice to know who you can go to. We all have different jobs. We all wear different hats. And, you know, I can't do what Wes does, and Wes can't do what I do. But if there's somebody in that legal territory that wants to ask me a question, I'm available, so...
If everybody's finished, we're going to move on with the agenda. But I want to make sure that everybody's felt like they've had an opportunity to speak. And so, we're going to move on. The next thing, thank you, Mickey.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
And Gail.
Boys and girls.
Thank you all for coming. Sabrina stayed over on her last meeting. And you have in your package, we've considered the property tax rate increase discussion. And that's one reason she stayed over. We put it early in the agenda tonight. And she's here to discuss any answer, any questions that you might have about that that you'd like for us to draw for a vote tonight. And Kentucky law allows us to raise, to have a four percent increase. And you've got on your chart there what four percent would bring. We did not budget for that large increase, and our finances are strong. The compensating rate is basically what, is that break even? And I'm going to suggest, I'm suggesting that we take the compensating rate. But if you've got any questions, that's the reason Sabrina's here.
Do you have to read anything, Sabrina?
Yes.
No, I read, well, I have to read the ordinance if you all vote on it. And if you all have decided and can vote on it, if you vote on it this time, we can do the first reading this time, then we can do the second reading next, and then we can get our property tax bills out.
So, do we vote on the first reading?
No, you vote on the second reading.
You'll just have to make a vote on what you...
I just...
We want to vote which one we're going to take, Billy.
Where y'all are leaning, so I can insert that amount into the first reading. Because then that way, if it changes, then we'll have to do another first reading.
So, give me a little insight on your recommendation, because you're the financial officer.
Well, I'm with the mayor. The compensating rate, I think we're financially strong. I don't see any reason why we should raise it four percent. I feel like the compensating rate is sixteen point seven, and I feel like that is sufficient to get us through where we need to be.
And that's zero point zero seven per hundred thou?
It's point seven cents per one hundred thou.
Yes.
Yep. Yep. So, it just goes from sixteen to sixteen point seven. And that just keeps us in the same financial situation as we were in the last year. It doesn't let us go backwards as a city.
I understand.
You know, you obviously...
Keeps us where we're at.
That's right.
It just keeps us...
Keeps us where we're at.
Yeah, and we're in good financial shape, in my opinion. So, that's what I would recommend.
So, there's consensus to do that. I'm going to ask her to read that ordinance.
Do we need to vote?
No. How would you?
Does anybody have any questions, or anybody feel like they want to do another?
Here's what I would do. I would vote on what rate you're going to take. Do that tonight. And then that way, Sabrina knows what she's going to read. That way, we don't have to start all over from scratch, or do special call meetings, or anything.
Okay.
And then you can vote on the ordinance maybe next time.
Yeah, we have to vote on the ordinance after the second reading. You can't do that on the first.
I want to entertain a motion to take the compensating rate for Litchfield's tax rate for the coming year.
So, Moon?
Second.
All in favor? I think we're good to go, Sabrina.
Okay.
Do we have what you're going to read in our packets?
She's just filling in where the two blanks are.
Okay.
I think there's two blanks on it.
Yeah. Okay. An ordinance relating to ad valorem taxation and imposing a bank franchise and local deposit tax for 2022, whereas the city of Litchfield is a municipal corporation of the home rule class in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. And whereas the city of Litchfield is required by the Kentucky Revised Statutes to annually by ordinance provide for the assessment of all property within the corporate limits of the city and levy an ad valorem tax therein. And whereas the city of Litchfield is authorized by Chapter 136 of Kentucky Revised Statutes to impose a bank franchise tax and local deposit tax, be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, Section 1A, that an ad valorem tax for 2022 of twelve cents of each one hundred valuation is hereby levied on all motor vehicles and sixteen point seven cents of each one hundred of other personal property... I did that backwards. Sorry. Let me... Twenty-six point three-three cents of each of other personal property and sixteen point seven of each one hundred worth of property is hereby levied on all lands improvements held or owned by person, firm, company, corporation, or association in his, hers, theirs, or its name, or a fiduciary or agent and subject to taxation under the laws of the Commonwealth of Kentucky located in the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, including all property and franchises thereto fore and thereafter assessed by the Department of Revenue, the State Board of Evaluation and Assessment, and Railroad Commission, which assessments, to the extent applicable, shall be adopted by the city. Taxes realized from said levies shall be deposited in the General Fund of the City and utilized for general municipal purposes as determined by the City Council. B, that the taxes hereby levied in this section shall become due and payable thirty days after the tax bill has been mailed. And if any tax bill is not paid thirty days thereafter, the tax shall be declared delinquent and shall be subject to a penalty of six percent and shall bear interest at the rate of six percent per annum until paid. A discount of two percent shall be allowed on all taxes if paid prior to thirty days and from the date tax bills are mailed. The taxes herein imposed shall be payable at City Hall, 515 South Main Street, Litchfield, Kentucky, during regular business hours. C, that the collection of taxes, interest, and penalties shall be the duty of the city tax collector who shall bill the taxes by mailing a statement to taxpayers. The city clerk slash treasurer is designated herein as the city tax collector. D, that for each calendar year, the assessment date for all property located within corporate limits of city Litchfield, Kentucky shall be January first. And the valuation of property subject to taxation shall be insofar as is applicable, the same assessed value as assessed by the Grayson County Property Valuation Administrator, who shall receive the fees provided by law for furnishing such assessments to the city. To the extent applicable, the assessments provided by the State Department of Revenue, the State Board of Evaluation and Assessment, and Railroad Commission shall be adopted by the city. Section 2A, there is hereby imposed on all financial institutions as defined in K R S Chapter 136, located within the corporate city limits of the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, for the 2022 tax year. In all subsequent years, a franchise tax at a rate of point zero two five percent on all deposits as defined by K R S Chapter 136, maintained by such financial institutions. B, the city of Litchfield will issue tax bills to financial institutions no later than December 1st of each year. Payment of the tax shall be due with a two percent discount by December 31st of each year or without discount by January 31st of each year. All taxes imposed by this section, which are not paid before January 31st, shall be deemed delinquent and shall be subject to a penalty of six percent and shall bear interest at a rate of six percent per annum. Section 3A, the city of Litchfield, Kentucky shall have a lien for taxes upon any and all property subject to the tax imposed by this ordinance, which lien shall be superior to all encumbrances prior or subsequent. B, all monies collected pursuant to this ordinance shall be paid into the General Fund of the City to be used for the payment of proper expenditures as determined by the City Council. C, on or about April 1st of each year, the city clerk treasurer shall prepare a list of outstanding unpaid tax bills within the city and shall promptly cause such list showing the name of each delinquent taxpayer, the number of the tax bill, and the amount due to be published in the newspaper having the largest circulation in the county. Said publication shall indicate that a fee in the sum of five dollars for each time the delinquent tax, the delinquent list is published shall be added to the amount owed on each delinquent tax bill. Section 4, the city clerk treasurer is hereby directed to send a copy of this ordinance to the Commissioner of the Kentucky Department of Revenue, Frankfort, Kentucky. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law adopted by the City Council of the city of Litchfield, Kentucky at a meeting held on the blank day of September 2022, after first being read on the sixth day of September 2022.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Thank you all.
And we'll read that next time and vote on it at our next meeting. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're at the second and final reading of the ordinance annexing property located at 103 Blue Chip Farm Road into the city limits. And this will be a second. We will vote on it. And I want to make it clear, the purpose and reason for this annexation. This is April Bowman and her husband, and they've requested to be annexed in the city. I have told April that, since Kendall Clemmons has stepped, I would put her on. She worked for Watkins Organization, has worked with planning and zoning boards all over the state. But I don't want to bring this to a vote unless there's kind of consensus that she would make a good candidate.
I think she'd be great.
I do too. So, I want to entertain a motion then to a second and final reading of the ordinance annexing property located at 103 Blue Chip Farm Road into the city limits. Do I hear a second?
Mayor, I need to read it before you do that.
You don't? Okay.
And just to let the council know, Kendall did the surveys on these, and I got the maps here if anybody wants to look at them.
She's adjacent to the city. She touches the city.
Yeah, she does. And the maps are here if anybody wants to look at them. So, all right, I will try to read as fast as I can. So, I did have COVID last week, so my voice might give out on me at any point. Ordinance annexing seven point eight-eight-nine acres of property located at 103 Blue Chip Farm Road, Litchfield, Kentucky, 42754, presently owned by April and Brian Bowman, with said property being contiguous to existing city limits. Whereas the property owners own certain real property located in Grayson County, Kentucky, at 103 Blue Chip Farm Road, Litchfield, Kentucky, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here too, and by this reference made a part here of the property. And whereas the property meets statutory requirements of consensual annexation under Kentucky Revised Statute, and the property owner's consent to the property being annexed into the city of Litchfield, Kentucky by prior written consent, whereas the proposed property to be annexed is adjacent or contiguous to the city, and the property is urban in character and suitable for annexation purposes. And whereas pursuant to K R S 81A point four twelve, the city of Litchfield may annex any area which meets the requirements for annexation if the owner of record of the land to be annexed gives prior written consent. And whereas the city of Litchfield declares it desirable to annex the property described in Exhibit A of this ordinance. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky pursuant to K R S 81A point four twelve as follows. The property presently owned by April and Brian Bowman, located at 103 Blue Chip Farm Road, Litchfield, Kentucky, 42754, containing seven point eight-eight-nine acres, which property is identified on the attachment as further described in the attachments to this ordinance, all of which is contiguous or adjacent to existing city limits, shall be and hereby annexed into the city of Litchfield, Kentucky. By consent of the owners and the boundaries of the city are hereby extended so as to include incorporate all this real estate into the city of Litchfield, Kentucky. A copy of this ordinance shall be forwarded to the Public Works Department and Planning and Zoning. Those departments are hereby authorized and directed to make necessary changes to the territorial limits of the city code of ordinance to reflect this annexation if required. The provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable. And if any section, phrase, or provision shall for any reason be declared invalid, such declaration or invalidity shall not remainder of this ordinance. All prior municipal orders, or ordinances, or parts of any municipal order or ordinances in conflict herewith or hereby repealed. And y'all can go ahead and vote on it.
Is this a vote that, we got to vote individually?
Yes, you do, because it's an actual ordinance.
Okay. Do we want to motion the second first?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second, Billy. Moon, how do you vote? Clayton?
Yeah.
Martin?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I think we made a good appointment. I said when I came down here, one of my jobs is to feel like that I've tried to create the next generation of leaders. Kendall Clemmons has served us well. He's been on twenty-two years. I appreciate his service, and I intend to give him some type of something really important. Maybe a silver dollar or something real.
That was our vote on the annexation.
It is. But I'm going to ask now, Clayton, to appoint April Bowman to fill the remainder of the Kendall Clemmons appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board. Do you want to make that motion?
Are the leases changed tonight?
Yes, well, what the mayor's...
Get them into seats tonight?
Yeah.
Watch tonight.
Yeah.
And that term will end on 12/31/22.
Well, then she'll...
Yeah. So, you don't have to do it tonight, but you are on a certain time limit that you have to fill that vacancy?
I mean, I don't care.
We'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody pose? April, if you're watching, you're going to be our next planning and zoning person appointment. And they meet Monday night at five o'clock. And you'll need to come to City Hall. I'll call her after a while, but she might be watching. You need to come to City Hall and give them your information, your social security stuff and all that, fill out your W twos, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, we can reach out to her.
I think April will be valuable to the Planning and Zoning Board. Like I said, it's in her line of work. And I think I thought all along that she would be good. And I appreciate the council agreeing with me. Okay, we're down to something real important business. Appointment executive session at K R S sixty-one point eight-one-oh-one dot C. Who wants to make that?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Erle. Anybody got any questions? Okay, let's wrap this show up. David, you got anything you want to report to us?
No, sir, Mayor.
Are you sure?
Positive.
Wes Shaw?
The only thing I've got is I did bring a couple of garbage cans out here that we've been looking at as far as purchasing cans, so if you wanted to look at them to see-
Did you find out any of that information in Charlotte that was in those people there?
Yeah, I talked to several, and they're, I've got a lot of information on them, different things. And these out here are pretty decent cans. They've got tenure warranties on them, both of them, two different companies, but there's a little difference in the price.
Wesley, if we buy a truck that will want to day, one of these days pick up those trashcans from the side of the road, would these work?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's what they're made for.
We're not going to do that tomorrow, but somewhere down the road, we want to look at that.
Yeah.
Uh-
Other than that, that's all I've got.
Well, did you learn anything in Charlotte?
Yes, I did.
Well, was it a lot of important stuff?
Some of it.
How to evacuate a hotel?
How to evacuate a hotel three times this night each night.
Well, Cindy said it was a pretty rough hotel state.
Yeah, six floors, door back, just downstairs, three times that night.
That wasn't no good. Ms. Erle?
Just to let you know, code enforcement, our September meeting is coming up. I don't know if you've noticed, but the record is down now. And even though the county tore that down, we had filed a petition regarding that, so, you know, code-
What did you say again?
If you've noticed, the record has been, has come down.
Oh, yes, the record building there, yeah.
Yes, and just to let you know, code enforcement's, you know, slowly but surely, we went to work, and we're already, you know, we've had some properties already come down, some in the process of coming down, so-
Let's run that ANZ pawn shop, two tore down.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so-
That was 20 and 21. The Catholic Church tore down three.
Yeah, Wes, you all tore down one.
Tore down one, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's working. It's been a process to get there, but it's finally working.
I hope we can do mobile homes.
Yeah, and that's down the pipeline, but we're slowly but surely, we're coming along.
That mobile home park north of the fairgrounds has been sold again, and that's an awful place to ask a human to stay, and the new owner's interested in cleaning it up. And I told him that I'd work with them to help them.
But after that code enforcement meeting, I should have some more information to bring back. If any properties are voted on, you all, of course, like always, would have to vote on those, but should know something after that meeting.
I think that's working good. Clayton, are you asking a question or just holding your hand? I thought you were getting Erle's attention. Erle, you got anything else?
No, I don't have anything else.
Lori?
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Harold Miller, did you want to say anything? Terry?
No.
Karen? Ruby?
No.
Tammy?
Yes, we have, next Saturday, we have a Tier B disc golf tournament coming over at this time. There's currently 51 participants in it. So Upper Gable Park will be shut down for Saturday until the baseball park.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, Tammy.
Can you put that on your bicycle bike?
Yes, also make signs to post around the parks so that they know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Moon Smith, you got anything you want to say?
Good.
Clayton Miller?
Wes, on that blacktop and the stuff, they, this makes about three years in a row those people over Quail Run's been on me, off of Sunbeam Road, back in there in that circle. The blacktop is broke, grass and weeds is growing up between it. Any outlook to get something done over there?
Possibly. We looked at it whenever we evaluated the streets to see which ones were in worse shape than others. It's actually in pretty good shape, other than it may have some grass going up through it every once in a while in the cracks, but as far as being, you know, stable and not breaking up, having holes in it, it's probably one of the better ones around. But, I mean, we might could do some weed killer or something to do that. And I'm going to try to look into doing some crack filling on some of our streets to kind of-
Do you do that or you contract that?
We did that a few years ago.
Yeah.
See if I've got enough money in the budget to do, you know, a street or two like that and see.
Anything else, Clayton?
You have to add to it, and it builds up the higher level of ditches, so you more or less have to strip it down. I've got a price on what it's going to cost to redo it.
Okay.
So, but we did have a look at it.
Okay. Anything else, Clayton?
That's it.
Margie?
No, sir.
You sure?
I'm positive.
No, sir.
Jessica?
I don't have anything.
Billy?
No, sir.
Let me make, I made a note or two. We sealed the, had the parking lot sealed. It was in the budget. Well, we kind of worked around the budget at the new, at the fire department and at the parking lot up above that. And that parking lot at the fire department was not done right. That water comes down and settles right there. And eventually, that cost us $12,000 to do that. And had we not sealed it, it would have been ruined for the year. And, but it really looks good. The striping and all looks good. Everybody's in for recycling. I told my loving wife today, I said, "Did you go to the recycle center?" She said, "Yes, I did." That's her fourth trip. So people are not picking up at people's homes, but we got a recycle center, it's open, we got somebody who works there, and clean your stuff up. They don't want dirty stuff. Tell a point or two, Wes, on recycling stuff.
Yeah, I mean, we need, don't need half jars of mayonnaise and, you know, bathroom tissues, not recyclable. We get lots of that, used tissues. And so, you know, just try to make it as clean as possible.
Yeah.
My guys have to deal with it, so, you know, if it's-
Is that an inmate doing that?
Uh, I've got a couple of inmates, and I've got a couple of other guys that work in there. And we get quite a bit dropped off through the day.
I need-
It's got its perks.
Your hands sore every bit of that, don't you?
Yeah.
Have we made a post that that's up and running and operational?
Has that been posted up, running?
I can't remember if we did.
I don't know, but we can.
Can we do that this week?
We can do that, yeah.
They'll send me something of what you, what you're accepting and everything, Wes, like just some kind of simple guidelines. I'll post that.
Yeah.
You take a glass?
No.
No? Like I said, the flagpole's been the big thing. We've spent several hours over there, and we appreciate Charlie Corbin doing, Corbett volunteered to work over there. He would not take any payment, and he knew what he was doing. He sure did, and I appreciate him coming over here.
Maybe Trevor was one who got the person's business papers too.
Yeah, that's good. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion adjourned.
I make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?